Okay, I think everybody's here. I'll call this meeting to order. Ms. Thomas, let you do your roll call, please.
Mayor Walker.
We've, well, President.
Okay.
President.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Counselor Hill.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Snook.
Here.
Thank you, and we'll do a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved to approve. But I just, I'm moved to approve the agenda as is.
A second.
All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Snook.
Yes. Yes.
Got it.
Okay. Counselors, are there any announcements?
Um, I actually have an announcement from Mr. Alex Zan to announce the 2021 Help List Award winners. Charlottesville, Virginia, the seventh annual Alex Zan's My Help List Contest winners have been chosen. The contest is a thinking, writing, reading activity for students K through 12 in Charlottesville and the surrounding counties. Students shared their thoughts on the importance of helping others and five things they have or can do to help someone. This year's winners are Andrew Scott, first grader in Charlottesville Elementary School, Sheila Powell, fourth grader at a Charlottesville, at an Albemarle Elementary School, Kelsey Bryan, seventh grader at a local Charlottesville private school, and Bernice Edwards, a 10th grader at Charlottesville High School. The winners all received $100 cash prize and were awarded on Thursday, the 13th of May. Yes, congratulations. Thank you all for your efforts and sharing your thoughts on helping others.
Congratulations. Are there any other announcements? All right, we have one proclamation today. It's a Provider Appreciation Day, which was on May 7th. It's, whereas childcare, childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas an estimated 12.8 million children under the age of six nationwide spend some time in a non-parental care arrangement on a weekly basis, which provides critical enrichment opportunities and nurtures development for children of all backgrounds and is a vital building block of our state economy. And whereas childcare providers, mostly women and many women of color, have long been essential to families in our community and our local economy with little recognition of their labor and skills. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created tremendous hardships for childcare providers during a global pandemic and an economic crisis in addition to a national reckoning on race. And whereas childcare providers in the greater Charlottesville area have continued to meet the needs of families in their centers and homes while risking their health and financial stability to remain open. And whereas childcare providers in centers and family day homes stepped in to support children in remote learning situations, doing all they could to provide space and support for school-aged children. And whereas our future depends on quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today, high-quality early childcare services represent a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Nakia Walker, Mayor of the City of Charlottesville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2021, as Provider Appreciation Day in Charlottesville, Virginia, and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work. And, okay, hi Melissa, and Melissa's here to say her words.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, and good evening, City Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Melissa Cohen. I'm here on behalf of the Growing Minds team at Ready Kids, which serves and partners with a broad network of childcare and preschool providers in the greater Charlottesville area. Thank you so much for recognizing and celebrating the hard work of childcare providers in our community. The COVID crisis has highlighted even more the importance of childcare for children, working parents and employers. Providers have shown up every day for families as essential workers and as a nurturing presence for our kids and families. Childcare providers are unsung heroes. Thanks again for this wonderful proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, are there any comments? Okay. All right, thank you. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you read the agenda, please?
Consent Agenda, one, minutes. March 15, closed in regular meetings. March 25, budget work session. April 13, special meeting. April 27, joint work session with Police Civilian Review Board. April 29, special meeting. Number two, appropriation. Supplemental appropriation of state operational funding for Charlottesville area transit. $265,025, second reading. Three, appropriation. Virginia Department of Education Special Nutrition Program. Child and Adult Care Food Program. $25,000, second reading. Four, appropriation. Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES. Act Round Two. Funding for Utility Customer Bill or Re-Edge Assistance. $15,766.58, second reading. Five, resolution. CARES Funds for City Hall Ambassador Program, $46,000, one reading. Six, resolution. Fourth amended Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program, CSRAP. Grant Agreement, one reading. Seven, ordinance. Establishing a grant program to promote and preserve home ownership by low and moderate income persons within the city of Charlottesville. First of two readings.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Wheeler, would you check and see if there's any members of the public who would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you're in the audience in the Zoom webinar and you'd like to address council, please click the raise hand icon. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. This is just for the items on the consent agenda. And there are no hands, Mayor Walker.
Okay, thank you. And is, so before the motion, I would like to see if we can pull number six and discuss that as item nine.
Fine.
All right. Fair motion.
I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented, however removing item six.
Okay. And I have some questions, just oh, number five. So this is the, for the City Hall Ambassadors Program, and so that would be for staff, and that is, when is that scheduled to end? And are the staff members outside, outside agency staff, or will they be additional hours for current staff?
And Mayor Walker and Mr. Boils, we do have Chad Thorne available from the Treasurer's Office.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Mayor Walker. So these are staffing from an outside agency. They are, it's a new contract that Human Resources and Procurement just finalized. It's not in addition to any of the staff that were previously there. Unfortunately, Parks and Rec had to take them back to resume their original duties.
Okay. And so at the end of summer, then this program will end?
That's the current plan.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions?
No, I actually had similar questions, so thank you.
All right. Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Um, yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That carries five zero. Next up, we have the City Manager Response to Community Matters and Matters from Counselors.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. A number of things, just to update everyone on. I am pleased to announce, and a formal announcement will be coming out later this week, that after a very large search process, we have offered and had a candidate accept the Deputy City Manager of Operations. He'll be bringing some extensive knowledge in the areas of affordable housing, community development, as well as small business development. He's currently the Executive Director of a community development corporation in a disadvantaged neighborhood of about 35,000 people in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. So more information will be coming out this week. I'm also very happy to announce that after a national search, we have promoted Ms. Sue Moffett to the Director of Social Services within the city. Sue's been with the city for a number of years and most recently serving many years as the Assistant Director of DSS. Director of the Police Civilian Review Board applications are now under review for an interview list. A panel consisting of city staff and PCRB members, as well as community members, will begin interviews in about a week or so. We had, I think, 64 applicants for that position. The Director of Human Rights, the application period closed last Friday with over 25 applications received for that position. We're currently reviewing now to get to an interview list, and the actual interviews there will be at least two to three weeks out going through that process. Hopefully, some of you were able to attend the city market on Saturday. We opened to in-person sales with offering drive-through as well as the in-person. The number of vendors were half of what is normal, but with still a fairly good turnout and just glad to have that back. And with the new state regulations, we'll continue to expand those offerings in June. We received a number of calls and emails on Friday and over the weekend regarding Midway Manor apartments here in downtown that have seen their elevators not working. They have two elevators and both are inoperable. Our staff got right on that Friday afternoon, contacted the state, reviewed for any types of regulations that we may have that would cover that, which we don't, but we did contact the property owners who said that they were waiting on parts for the repairs. And we also contacted the state who oversees the licensing of elevators. So hopefully that will, that will get repaired soon. And we did make recommendations to the property owners to accommodate, you know, the families that this caused a hardship on the best that they could. All that we could really do is encourage that, but we did try to do that. We've also, very recently, based on some articles in the press, have received a number of inquiries regarding Jalt in some of the recent financial transactions. So we'll be setting up a meeting there and very likely we'll, we'll ask Jalt to come and do a presentation to the mayor and council on where they are in their transition process and as well as answer any questions that you may have regarding those articles. We're finally getting more guidance on the American Rescue Plan. We have gotten what I feel is final confirmation that we'll, we will be receiving the 19-plus million dollars for both metropolitan city as well as the county services that we provide. We're also, Treasury is putting out regularly the regulations as part of the final rule. And one of the things that we have relayed to you but wanted to relay to the public too is originally we thought there would be a lot more flexibility with these funds, but they really are getting closer to what the original care requirements were so that almost all of the funds do have to be used for a direct COVID-type expenditure. The two flexible areas that is different with these funds is we can use these funds to offset past revenue losses during the COVID period. And we can also use for capital expenses in the areas of water, sewer, or broadband. But other than that, these funds have to be tied to some type of COVID expenses. Our staff is putting together an inquiry form right now so that we can begin to take letters of interest from both departments and community stakeholders so that they could identify what they would use the funds for, how that would be tied to alleviate and mitigate COVID expenses, and a timeframe, which we have known from the beginning. All funds of the ARP have to be spent by the end of December in 2024. So we're continuing to push that forward. We should receive our first payment, which is half, is proposed to be half of the funding this coming week. And then we would receive the other half a year from now. Just two reminders for dates. May 25, we'll have a workshop on the 7th Street parking garage or parking spaces in relation to the Corks project with Albemarle County. And then May 26, right now, we have a proposed joint school board meeting regarding the reconfiguration project. And that's what I have right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Community Matters. I'll turn it over to Mr. Wheeler, and we didn't have any pre-registered speakers.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you'd like to address council on any topic, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Each person will have up to three minutes to address council. If you're watching via Facebook or BoxCast, you can join us on the webinar by visiting charlottesville.gov/zoom. You can register there and get into this portion of the meeting. We have about 16 people in the audience. We have one hand up right now. And that's Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you're on with council, and you've got three minutes.
You are here, Mia.
We can.
Okay. Few things I wanted to bring up. One, I know Parks and Rec is reopening. The pools and the registration require, actually pool, let me not say that with an S because it's not pool. Think about registration process, please, Chip. When you think about kids who are going to walk up just to try to get in with any of the Parks and Rec services, when you think about a reservation process, you need to think about kids being kids. Kids are going to want to go to the gym to shoot hoops. Kids are going to want to show up at the swimming pool to go swimming. Not all kids are going to register online and do the reservation process. So make sure you all think about that. Number two, I wanted to bring up, Heather was on the Rob Schilling Show talking about the uptick in gun violence. Listen, I don't know what type of community we run here at the end of the day. How dare you all question or talk about uptick in gun violence when we've yet as a community to address the drug use and the drug issues that we face in Charlottesville? Whether it's an opioid issue affecting the middle-class white communities or whether it's an issue of drugs affecting low-income communities. You don't have the police, the Sheriff's Department, any of the health officials or anybody addressing the uptick in whether it's prescription pills or illegal drugs. You've yet to put any of that on 360. So that's something that you need to talk about, too, when you want to be progressive and proactive with community, is you have to discuss these type of things and have the people who specialize in this type of stuff. I've been begging Joe Platania, the Police Department, to at least have a conversation live for the city to address drug use. We've seen overdoses happen in the city that police have responded to. And last but not least, the last thing that I want to address is people are still leaving from city home, but I see that there's been no articles put in the newspaper about it. See, it's the picking and choosing for me, and I'm tired of bringing that to your attention, that you all want to report and drop certain, you know, little clues to the media around here when it's black leadership on this day. We not going to keep playing that game. Chip, this new dude you handed, is he black or white? You didn't share that with the public. You said it's a man. Is the man black, white, Indian, what? What is he? We want to know. That's being transparent. So again, we talk about being open, transparent, inclusive, and being fair. That's, that's not what y'all doing. So get it together, please, and thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If you'd like to address council, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. There will be one other opportunity at the end of the meeting for matters by the public. We have one new hand up now. Tom Gathers, you're on with council. You've got three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. I'm glad to hear that you all have addressed the issue of the elevators over at Midway Manor. I don't know if we would need to contact Human Rights Division or Human Services, but those people over there desperately need some help and some assistance. It's not fair for them to be in the situation that they're in. And it's my understanding that they have been waiting on one of the elevators to be repaired since July of last year. And the constant refrain is that they're waiting on part to come in. Well, there's no manufacturer in the world that it takes practically a year to get a part from. That's, that's, that's just not, that's not acceptable at all. And it, I don't know, just for the sake of argument, you could melt down a statue or something here in town and create a part out of it if necessary in a year's time. So that's just not, that's not feasible. There's just something that has to be done to help our elderly community in this time of need. God forbid, there's a real health crisis or health emergency in that building. And we're not able to reasonably get people up or down from the floor. So I would appreciate that you all continue to stay on top of that. Don't buy the excuses that the, the people who run the place are giving because that's all that they are at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Nancy Carpenter. Nancy, you're on with council, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you and good evening. I appreciate Mr. Gathers' comments about Midway Manor. I've also been one of those folks trying to call Bush Construction Corporation, who is the general partner, the only general partner of the limited liability Midway Manor Associates who are listed in your tax records as the owners. And of course, they didn't do me the courtesy of calling back. And you're right, these folks have been without an elevator that fits a gurney because the one elevator that was operational was not big enough to fit a gurney. So thank God, there has not been any type of medical emergency that would warrant the use of that with first responders. And I will say a shout out to Lowe's and Fishes because they were out there over the weekend doing their deliveries, and they actually went up to the individual apartments and delivered the food bags where they normally probably would have left them down in the lobby. So, so thank you to those folks for doing that. And you're right, this is the only private apartment building for seniors and disabled in our community. And it's, you know, and I know that, you know, it's limited for what you all can do. But I think, you know, leaning into VHDA, who has the mortgage, I heard from somebody from there today that they were going to look into it. I think the fire department was out there over the weekend. And even I think our local delegate to the General Assembly was out there this weekend. I mean, you know, this is reminiscent I mean, you know, this is reminiscent of a Crescent House fiasco several summers ago when, you know, the heating, or excuse me, the cooling system failed, but at least those folks could go up and down the elevator to get out of the building and get some relief from the heat. Right now, there are folks who are literally not able to do their average daily, you know, life experiences of sometimes getting fresh air, taking a little walk. Jaunt has been, people have been impacted from getting to jaunt to go to appointments. So I think that we need to rally around these folks as well and try and lean in on this owner and the mortgage company to, you know, I mean, my God, do we have to do a GoFundMe to get a truck to go out to wherever the, you know, manufacturer is, pick up the part and get it? I mean, like Mr. Gathers said, melt a statue and make a part. Thank you.
If there's anyone else who'd like to address counsel, now's the time to click the raise hand icon. Next up is Walt Heinecke. Walt, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Everyone's well and inoculated. I was just listening to the PCRB meeting this last week, and I think I heard a comment that said that there wasn't much appetite on counsel for a very strong ordinance that reflected what the state legislature has enabled for investigatory powers as well as disciplinary powers. And I just really want to encourage you to get that appetite. You know, we've been waiting around for this since 2017, and in the first go-around with this, the ordinance got watered down. And so we now have another bite at the apple to make this the strongest possible ordinance to serve our community and protect our community into the future across, you know, a lot of different officials that are going to be in your place and in the chief of police spot for a long time going forward. So I really would like to see some leadership on counsel urging the PCRB to enable the strongest possible model allowed by the state. And I know that you all have to do due diligence, and I've heard you do your due diligence. There's a difference between doing due diligence and looking for excuses to torpedo a policy. And sometimes I can't sense where we are on that line, but I want to encourage you to think about where we were after 2017 and to think about the possibilities of creating a truly sort of model, you know, a model for the rest of the state and the rest of the country to follow when thinking about creating a police civilian review board that has very strong civilian oversight, disciplinary powers, and investigatory powers. I think the state legislature did their due diligence. They thought about these things. There may be a few little, you know, glitches to work out, but overall, I would love to see a commitment by counsel, you know, publicly, verbally, to creating the strongest possible model that the state legislature has allowed us. And I know there may be challenges in the future, but let's be out in front of this, you know? It only takes one council to start a revolution in the state of Virginia, and I hope it's this council that will do it. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, if I could, can I just, on the Midway Manor issue, I just want to, we brought this up at previous council meetings, and it's separate from the elevator, but it called it to mind, and I think it's important to bring up. It's just, when John Sales was housing coordinator, he identified a list of liotech properties, and Midway Manor was at the top in terms of risk of displacement, in terms of affordability period. Once that's over, the developer will have the opportunity to sell it and do whatever they want with it. They could evict everyone, make it into, you know, luxury housing and make enormous profits. I think that bigger context is worth keeping in mind as these issues come up. And from both counsel and the community's perspective, that affordability period will end in a couple of years, and I do think now is the time to really be watching it and to be thinking about what, if anything, can we do proactively with a land bank or a land strike fund to prevent any chance that the individuals in that property are evicted once the low-income housing tax credit period ends? And I won't say, I'm not saying that this is necessarily what's happening here, but when you look at New York City and other states, there are low-income housing tax credit properties that, when affordability periods are coming up towards their end, maintenance is intentionally avoided in order to create as poor living conditions as possible to encourage people to leave in anticipation of selling it and rehabbing it to turn it into luxury housing. So I think that is perhaps important context here that I just want to highlight.
Are there any other speakers?
No other speakers, Mayor Walker.
All right, thank you. All right, councilors, any comments? And just that thanks, I know it's little, you know, that staff could do, but every time that I've reached out to NDS, too, about the, an issue at Midway Manor, and it's been these two elevators over the last few months, there's been an immediate response. I wish there was more that we could do, but it's really limited. But according to Ms. Carey, the telephone calls and the contact has been, you know, she feels like there's more movement than there was in the past, so that's a good thing. All right. So next up, we'll just keep moving forward. We have the public hearing appropriation, so the Belmont Bridge replacement project. It's the first two readings, is $4,280,739.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeanette Yonichak. I'm the UCI Appropriation Manager for the City of Charlottesville for the Department of Public Works. As Mayor Walker said, I'm looking for a state appropriation of state funds for $4,280,739 that would raise the project budget to $35,380,782. We advertised the invitation for bid back in January 15, 2021. We had a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting on February. We had also many questions resulting in five addendums issued on this invitation for bid. As a result, we had a bid opening on March 17, and we received six bids. The lowest responsive responsible bid can be awarded with existing project funds. However, there is a need for additional funding of this 4.2 million to cover the contingency, construction inspection services, VDOT oversight, as well as utility relocation. Our first step was looking at the bid, comparing it against our engineer's estimate as well as the other bids, and we identified six primary areas where there was a difference in our cost, and that was the retaining wall treatment, lighting, precast girders for the bridge, bridge demolition, temporary shoring, as well as the steel girders. Looking at that, we were noticing not only were the material costs just much more expensive, and we do believe that this is related to the pandemic, whether it's supply chain production or just simply inflation, that we're seeing an increase in material costs, or we're also seeing an increase in labor costs as well, that there is more work than there is skilled labor resulting in higher costs. So we did a detailed bid analysis, and we have submitted that to VDOT, and they have concurred with our findings that this is indeed a good bid. To ensure that we are being responsible with the public dollar, we looked at ways that we could possibly lower the cost. And lowering the cost would result in large changes in the project, whether that is removing the new pedestrian underpass, removing the knuckle or the enhanced pedestrian access structure, which is the additional bridge connecting the mainline bridge to the pavilion downtown area, removing one staircase or multiple staircases, removing the retaining wall treatment, or indeed full closure of ninth or eighth one. Any of these options would result in us having to rebid the project. This adds at least a years in time, but most importantly, it doesn't fulfill the commitments that we've made to the public as well as the Board of Architectural Review. So we were not recommending that. In meanwhile, contingent, we're also working with the Virginia Department of Transportation. And after about a month and a half, they were able to identify additional state funding from the State of Good Repair Local Bridge Fund that would allow us another 4.2 million, essentially. And if you are okay with this appropriation, which would require a second reading at your next meeting, we have multiple steps that we still need to complete. So we have the notice to award we need to do, we need to start the contract execution, we need to conduct a pre-reconstruction meeting, we need to secure permits. So basically, we would be, if the appropriation was to go forward, we'd be looking at construction as early as the end of June of this year. And then in addition, we're also proposing to hold another public meeting, and that is when we have the contractor schedule that would, while we have an MOT, Maintenance of Traffic Plan, while we have a sequence of construction plan included in the invitation for bid, we're not sure if the contractor is going to agree to that or if they have some alternative methods that they would like us to consider. So once they submit their baseline schedule, we'll release that to the public and let people know what to expect during construction, how to contact us, how we're going to have at least monthly updates, we're probably going to have weekly traffic alerts, and just who to contact in case they have any questions. So do you all have any questions tonight?
Councilors, are there any questions at this time?
Are there any assurances or things to help ensure there aren't additional cost overruns? Is there an expectation that that won't be the case, or is that still as much of a risk as it has been up to this point?
So once we execute the contract, we lock in the pricing for, oh, gosh, at least six pages of different items. So it is normal during construction to underrun some items and overrun other items. That price is secure. And then we have now a contingency fund, which that 4.2 is funding, that if there were indeed any change orders, that, too, would be covered. But there is, it's very regulated. We would have to do an independent cost analysis, review that against any contractor, change in price, if there was a change in the method of work, if there's something under, in the ground that we're not aware of that would be a change condition. So we should be covered with the 4.2 contingents, for our $4.2 million state appropriation that allows for a 10% contingency fund. And the idea is to not spend all that money, just so you know. So hopefully, I can return some to you all.
And counsel, I'd like to add, if I can, a concern that I have is that if this project is delayed, we're already seeing very substantial inflationary projections into the near future. If President Biden's infrastructure package that's in Congress is approved, you will see just, you know, multiple fold of capital projects underway. This had to be rebid. I would say that we would end up with less product and at least the same amount, if not more of the cost. You know, I say that just to recommend that I think moving this project forward is paramount for us right now.
Okay, thank you. And I think it's important to just, this is an example of just the delays that projects can go through and how that increased the cost, and ultimately, we end up in the same place of having a need that needs to be fulfilled. So hopefully, in on future projects, counsel, staff, the community can come, you know, to decision point a little bit quicker and hopefully, you know, save. I know a lot of people are struggling with the material, increase in material costs for construction projects at this time, and we're having very similar conversations about schools and parking garages and housing. So that's the only point I have at this point, but we'll open it up if the other councilors don't have comments for the public hearing. All right. Mr. Wheeler, we can open it up for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you'd like to speak in the public hearing on the Belmont Bridge Replacement Project, click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. We have one hand up. It's Don Gathers. Don, you're on with counsel, and you've got three minutes.
I apologize. I didn't realize that my hand-up icon was listed. I didn't want to speak at this point. Thank you, Don.
No problem. Last call for any participants in the public hearing. Mayor Walker, there are no hands raised.
All right, thank you. Councilors, are there any other questions or comments?
No, thank you, Jeanette. I'm sure that you'll also look forward to this, making some progress. Very much so.
And there's a no vote tonight, so it decided we'll move for the June 7th consent agenda.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Fourth Amendment Charlottesville supplemental rental system. And this was moved to the, to item number nine from the consent agenda based on a conversation that we had during our report section of the meeting tonight that started, that we had at four. And so, Mr. Bowles, I'll just turn it over to you, and then we'll have a discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me say thank you mostly to Lisa and Brenda, who took this and ran with it between the four o'clock meeting and now to take a look at the, I believe it was three items that you asked us to look at, was moving the rental, the fair rental market amounts from currently at 110% of the average median income for city properties to 125 and for county properties to 100%. I believe that was item number one. The second was to look at the reserve that's used to protect the tenants throughout the program. And the final was a payment of security deposit to the landlords. I believe those were the three items, and if I can, I may just turn it over to Brenda and Lisa, who did the legwork on this between the two meetings.
I can help out. I know Brenda is on the meeting but is, has been out of town, so I'll try to tackle it. My first question during the break was whether or not the need to identify 125% of market rent, the need for counsel to approve that, related to some exception that needs to be clarified from the normal voucher program regulations. And if that's the case, if you all note in your packet, there is one other location within the grant agreement where we've identified a circumstance that you want the CISA money to go towards.
CICERAP money to, to go towards that had to be identified as an exception to the normal HUD rules and regulations in the voucher program administration. So if, if the need to have 125% voted on by council is because it's, it's a departure from the normal voucher program rules, then that's certainly something that you can approve. And what we would do after you vote is add that into Section 3 of the agreement, which is on page five of the document, or page 48 of your council agenda packet, and we'll just add that in before we sign off on it altogether. The second issue relating to the reserve is that a number of years ago, the reserve was established and referenced within the CICERAP grant agreement for the purpose of protecting tenants. And the thought was that in the event that the program money ran out for a given fiscal year, if this reserve had been established, even if you couldn't accept new applications, people currently in the units would be able to stay, currently in supported units would be able to stay for an additional period of time. I wanted to, so the requirement for reserve is in the agreement that's in front of you tonight, and has been for a number of years. If you would like to delete the requirement for reserve, you can, but I don't think we need to. Brenda indicated to me that she believes that the reserve is currently funded, so it should not be the case that the dollar amounts you're approving tonight will go to make up a reserve. It's my understanding that while the reserve was not funded as required by the grant agreement, at some points in the past, it is back up to being funded at this point in time. And then the third issue, which is the payment of security deposit to landlords, it is fine to do that and include that as part of this agreement if you would like to, but much like the 125% rule, if, if that's something you specifically want to authorize this pot of money to do, we will need to add that into the grant agreement, because currently the grant agreement that's in front of you says specifically that it's for tenant-based housing assistance, and if the security deposits are to be paid directly to the landlord, that's more in the nature of a subsidy to to, to the landlord. And while that's fine for you to do it, we just want to, as is the CICERAP money, to be used for that purpose. And so I think those were the, the three categories, and either Brenda or I can answer any questions if you have them.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think in terms of, I think we were at the number, with Mr. Sales said they could help three more families. They would not be, not be able to assist three families, but would be able to help 25 families with either the security deposit or bonus to landlords. And for me, I, when we talk about the evaluation of these programs, I think I would, I would like to think about this a little bit more, because if, this is back, I think, to the conversation of whether we give some families more, and 122 families on the waiting list, so I would want to add three more families to that, but, but would like to figure out how to, how to add more money so that it doesn't become a, either help the, you know, help families, you know, more holistically, or there are three families in the future who may not get help at all, attempting to be more holistic. So that's just my thought about the third one. I hope we can add the 120, the 125%. I may have some questions around whether we should lower it to 100% if something else comes up in the county that meets that 110%, but that's my only other question there. And I guess the reserve question's been answered for me. Counselors, any questions?
I apologize, I'm having some internet difficulties here. so if I recall, CRHA proposed a program that we paid some money into for assistance with security deposits in a landlord. Didn't we already have a program that was kind of helping with some of that?
Landlord Risk Reduction?
That's what it was called. I, I don't know if Brenda's available to speak or not. I know that originally, it was spoken of as a separate program, but I don't know if that was, it must have been separately funded, or it must have been contemplated to be separately funded, because since the CICERAP program was established, this particular grant agreement has just referenced tenant-based assistance, but the landlord risk reduction program in years past, my recollection was that it was discussed as being an additional program, but I, I can't speak to how we've been funding it if we've already been funding it.
This is Brenda Kelly. So the landlord risk reduction program was previously approved by City Council a couple of years ago, and the City Council allocated $75,000 to go towards that program. We're still trying to kind of determine if that money is still sitting in the calf to be able to be used, but what the holdup was, moving forward with that, was we needed to issue a competitive procurement process to get someone on board to administer that program. So, you know, we've had a little issues with staff and moving forward with that, so that has not moved forward at this time. I believe also, Council McGill, that CRHA received some other funding. I don't know if it was CARES funding or some other funding they got, I believe, over the summer, that they were able to assist with security deposits. I think John Sales was talking about that at the four o'clock meeting. So that was separate funding that they got from some other source, not the city. So that's what he was talking about.
Okay. What I was thinking was, if we already have a program in place for security deposits and landlord risk reduction, it seems like it would be smoother to put more money in those to balance, and then keep the CICERAP program just for the rental.
We could do that. However, I want to point out to you that if you do that, the landlord risk reduction program was intended to incentivize landlords to take vouchers that previously haven't been doing that, or rent out units at an affordable rate, where what Mr. Sales was talking about is, in order to kind of help the CICERAP program along, if they could have a fund available specifically for landlords to accept the CICERAP program, that's what he was talking about.
And I think towards Brenda's first point just now-
So the first program is supposed to be for vouchers?
So just keep in mind, though, that this landlord risk reduction program was set up some time ago, and since then, you now have a new state law that doesn't allow people to discriminate in terms of the source of funds from, for which rent will be paid. And so, long story short, it, you, in turn, so first thing we, you should figure out, and Brenda says everybody's trying to review this, is whether or not there is money that you previously allocated for landlord risk reduction that's sitting out there somewhere, because if it is, it would be easy enough to simply do a separate grant agreement for that money, and have, have it come back to you, and have CRHA manage that in conjunction with CICERAP. So if there's already money that's out there that was previously allocated, but we're, we're trying to figure out sort of where it's sitting, then that means that money, you know, you won't have to use the CICERAP money in a different way than you originally intended. If that money's not there, then you may or may not want to use a portion of the CICERAP money identified in this particular grant agreement, you know, to fund that type of program. You may or may not. So it's, it's up to you, but it seems like the issue, there's two issues, and one is whether there actually already is money allocated, and it just needs to be tracked down. And second, who's going to administer the security deposit program? Is that going to be an outside person, or is it going to be CRHA in conjunction with CICERAP?
Okay. So I think for tonight, unless there are different thoughts about that, if we can add the up to 125% for the fair market rents for the city, then that should be very helpful to attempt to keep families in this program able to rent within the city limits. And then if there are future amendments, then that, we can discuss that, those at a future date.
Where would that change be?
Yeah.
Lisa, well, Ms. Robertson said in Section 3 of the, on page five of the current agreement.
That's right.
Section 3 just says administration, right?
Yeah, so the way this agreement was set up was that it was tenant-based assistance, and it's supposed to sort of be in addition to, it's supposed to be administered generally in accordance with the same requirements of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. But to whatever extent the city wants this money to be available for things that, that the HUD rules and regulations might or might not allow, it's my understanding, at least on one previous occasion, we wanted to make it clear that you could allow for single-room housing that might not otherwise meet HUD rules and regulations, you could allow for the money to, to be used in connection with, with one of those units. So if the purpose of having the vote on the 125% is to allow this money to be applied to certain units that the HUD regulations wouldn't normally allow it to be used for, such as those that go for rents that are a certain percentage above market rate, then if you want to add the 125% reference as an exception to what would normally be the Housing Choice Voucher Program rules, we would just put that reference in Section 3 after you vote on this tonight.
Okay. I was conscious of the fact that 125 would be replacing a 110, so I was looking for a 110, but it's not there.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure why that is. Maybe we've been doing some unspoken things, but if, if we put it in here, then it will be clear for any audit or any other thing that, that we've allowed it to be used for that. And there won't be any miscommunications between council and the housing authority about how this CICERAP money can be applied.
And I think since it was following the HUD guidelines, that that was probably specific enough, you know?
That was 100%, is that right?
Yeah, HUD guidelines are 100%, not 110%. So I don't know where 110% ever came from. We should probably put that in as well for the, for the outlying counties if we're accepting 110%.
I thought the recommendation, I thought the recommendation was to accept 100 from Almaral.
Yeah, and so that maybe a Mr. Sales hand is up, if he can answer if it would be, you know, if leaving it at 110 for the county would do any harm, or does it need to be dropped to 100%?
Hey, counselors, good afternoon now, evening. So the HUD guidelines give housing authorities the authorization to use 110% FMR when you're in a high-rent district. So how does that now? So we have been using 110% for CICERAP as well, because that is part of the HCV guidelines through HUD. So what I was requesting earlier was to move city residents to 125% to catch a little more residents that live in the city, so more money is being spent in the city that the city is providing. And the, removing the 110 for the county would not negatively impact anyone that's currently leased with a city assistance through the CICERAP program. So not at the moment, it won't affect anyone. So going forward, it won't affect anyone as long as they meet their 100% guidelines, which we are right now.
So what you're proposing for this grant agreement to say is for the city units to go up to 125, and for units in the county to go down to 100 from the normal HUD rule of 110 that the housing authority has adopted?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. We can write that in, that's easy enough to do.
Thank you. And then the, I'm not clear on where the $75,000 is, but I guess staff will be giving us an update on whether that's even available, and then we can have a future discussion about what to do with that. Okay.
Yeah, I do think it's really important that we, we are looking for security deposit help. I know when I worked at Region 10, that was always probably the hardest thing to try to find, was security deposit for people.
All right, so is there a motion?
I move we approve the Fourth Amendment Grant Agreement for the Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program with the changes outlined by council this evening with adjustments to FMR levels.
Assuming it's good enough, I second it.
All right, Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that carries five zero. And next, is there any other business?
The only other things we talked about was just making sure that council has information they need as we prepare for the joint session with the school board, and it sounds like we're going to try to use our weekly meetings with Mr. Boils to, to go over some of that additional information beyond what was already shared with council from the meetings to date with that working group.
And that's the, just-
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Okay. Any questions from counselors about that? No? Okay. The other business? Chip needs to be here till at least 10:30, 10:45.
I'm sure he's got plenty of- I'm sure he's got plenty of work.
Okay. So, Mr. Willough, we're opening it up for the matters by the public.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. We still have 17 people in the audience. If you'd like to address counsel, click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. You can also press star nine if you're on via telephone. As we're waiting for a few hands to go up, just a reminder, if you're watching on Facebook or BoxCast, you can join the webinar by going to charlottesville.gov/zoom.
Never thought like whatever last month, we'd be breaking that record.
Don't, don't jinx.
Sorry, not trying to jinx anything. My husband's just going to be like crazy when I walk out of here, like, done.
There are no hands raised, Mayor Walker.
All right. Counselors, any, nothing? All right.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Be safe.